And I'm going to mute everyone to start off, so be mindful of that. Okay, the time is 7:33 and I will call this meeting to order. We will begin with the pledge allegiance to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you, Mary Ann. We can go with our roll call.
Oh, sorry. Ms. Thompson?
Present.
Ms. Segal-Morris?
Present.
Mr. Ross?
Not with us today.
Okay. Not with us, okay. Mr. Brea?
Present.
Mr. McCann?
Here.
Mr. Berry?
Present.
And Mr. Finer?
Present.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. And I should just note that Mr. Ross did contact me shortly before this meeting. He had an onsite visit for his job today and wasn't able to be back in time. So before we continue, unless there's any objection, I'd like to make a quick adjustment to our agenda and move up the swearing in of Jamie Trulove as our animal control officer to this point in the meeting. So Chris, Jamie, take it away.
All right, sorry, Dave. All right, good, Amy there? Or Jamie there?
I'm here.
All right, good. So do you have the oath in front of you by chance, Jamie?
I do.
All right, good. So we'll go slow and we'll get you all sworn in, okay? So please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear
that I will support, obey, and defend
that I will support, obey, and defend
the Constitution of the United States
the Constitution of the United States
the Constitution of this Commonwealth
the Constitution of this Commonwealth
uphold the animal-related laws and ordinances
uphold the animal-related laws and ordinances of the Borough of Yardley and that I will discharge the duties of a non-civil service animal control officer of the Borough of Yardley with fidelity and to the best of my judgment and ability.
I like your style, Jamie. Congratulations.
Thank you. And thank you very much, everybody. I appreciate it.
All right.
Sign off now.
Thank you. Yep, you're good to go. You're official.
Bye, everybody. Stay safe.
Okay, moving on to our next agenda item is community announcements. I have none to offer at this time. Unsurprisingly, most of our events are canceled. But if anyone has anything that they would like to announce, now would be the time to do so. So any members of council, please just feel free to chime in if you have anything. All right, seeing none, we will move on to the public comment portion of the meeting. This is the portion of the meeting which members of the public may address council related to items that are not on the agenda. If you wish to comment on an item that does appear on our agenda, you will be given an opportunity to do so at that time. Residents are asked to please state their full name and address before making their comment. And if council requires it, there may be a follow-up. Also, because we are obviously not in person, we are utilizing the hand raise function in Zoom. So if you have called in, you can activate that by pressing star nine on your phone. If you've joined via computer, down at the bottom, there should be a button.
This call is being recorded. If you do not wish to be recorded, please disconnect at this time.
Sorry, there was just a recording audio that came. You can activate your hand raise by hitting the participants tab at the bottom. There should be a raise hand button. Is there any public comment this evening?
I have one.
Yes, Ms. Perlmutter.
Am I?
Yes, I just unmuted you, so go ahead.
Okay, um, I'm calling in regard to last week. I questioned if the code enforcement officer was getting paid. And soon after, I received a zoning citation from the code enforcement officer to remove an outdoor light that's been on my house for 12 years. As you're aware, my house has been vandalized several times. I had graffiti on my property. My car was vandalized. Recently, my privacy fence was stolen. Six mature shade trees were cut down, including religious memorial trees. And I've recently been the victim of an anti-Semitic hate crime. So it's a little disturbing that I got this citation for this outdoor light, which is really provides needed safety and security. It's on the back corner of my house. I can't even reach it. It's kind of an unusual request since it's been there for 12 years. And the timing of it is disturbing. And as you know, it's not the first time that the code enforcement officer has singled me out for unusual citations. Last year, I received three notices for poison ivy. I think this is retaliation for questioning, continually questioning the arbitrary and capricious code enforcement practices. And it really adds insult to injury considering that he did not enforce a stop work order that facilitated vandalism of my property. So Councilman Brea, you were very proud when you passed the Yardley Borough Anti-Discrimination Ordinance. And I want to make a formal complaint of discrimination, harassment, and retaliation. Wes Foraker is a Yardley Borough employee. And I really want to know what you're going to do about this.
So, Mrs. Perlmutter, a couple of things I want to address first and foremost is I am familiar with the complaint, or the notice rather, that you received from our code enforcement officer. And what I can tell you is it absolutely was not related to the questions that you asked in the council meeting that we held two weeks ago. Our code enforcement officer, in my opinion, does his job as he should. He evaluates each situation individually on the merits. As we've discussed many times before, code enforcement is in many times complaint-based. So as we receive complaints, they are often evaluated. He additionally does do some patrolling. Again, this, you know, is standard. I believe he does an excellent job at that. And I can tell you that the letter you received does not have anything to do with your statements at the last council meeting. In regards to, you know, the accusation that was just leveled, you know, all I'm going to say is that the ordinance that we passed in regards to anti-discrimination lays out a mechanism to file a complaint. You can contact our Borough Manager, Paula Johnson, if you wish to initiate that process. But I don't think at this time it would be appropriate for me to comment further upon that. Again, given the accusation that was just leveled. There is a process. And if you wish, that is there for you or anyone else to follow.
With all due respect, Councilman Brea, this has been going on a long time. And I know that everybody is very friendly with Mr. Foraker. There is other issues here, the fact that he holds a full-time job and also has two part-time positions.
Mrs. Perlmutter, I'm
I mean, no, it seems like you're defending this, you know, constantly defending this.
Is it appropriate for a resident to directly attack a borough employee in this setting?
I am not attacking. That's, this is the appropriate format for me to address an employee of the borough who is getting paid full-time for a job and has two half-time positions. And I'm bringing it to the attention of the entire council that he's not, I brought it to your attention last week, that he's not doing the job. It's been capricious, arbitrary. I have been the victim of this several times.
I'm going to end this here now and call time on this public comment. Again, we have heard this complaint many times. We have looked at our process that we follow within the borough. You know, we take these things seriously. So I know that you keep coming to these meetings and keep leveling this complaint, this accusation. What I can tell you is that we have looked at it. I do not believe that our employees are asking
Who has looked at it? When have you looked at it?
I have reviewed
You have. So you have become, why hasn't the new council member looked at it?
This is not appropriate forum for this conversation. We are going to move on if there is additional public comment. There has been extensive communication between the manager and the solicitor with you on this issue. And continuing to bring it up is not going to
I'm bringing it to the attention of the new council members. We have new council members, three of them. And I don't think it's appropriate for you to dismiss their opinions. They are entitled to review this. You are not the dictator of Yardley. This is a democracy.
Mrs. Perlmutter, we're going to move on now. I am going to mute you. If there are additional public comments, we will move on. Would anyone else like to make public comments tonight? All right, I'm not seeing any. So we will then move on. The next item on our agenda is our consent agenda dated for today, May 5. Is there any objection from a member of council or consideration of the consent agenda as a whole? All right, hearing none, I will ask for a motion to approve today's consent agenda.
So moved.
There's a second?
Second.
All right, motion has been made by Councilperson Segal-Morris, seconded by Councilperson McCann for the approval of the consent agenda dated today, May 5. Is there any discussion or questions from council?
David, what is the banner? I just, I'm looking and I don't see what the banner is for.
Yes, so that was, actually, give me just a second to pull up the packet. This is something we're actually sort of doing as a little bit of a surprise.
Oh, I see it. I see it.
Yeah, go ahead and don't tell anyone. But I think it's okay to say in this forum, I see everyone's on the call. But we wanted to do a sort of a surprise to all of our graduating seniors from Pennsbury this year who aren't going to get to do their normal graduation ceremony. So the banner will hang. It was donated. The labor was donated. So a special thank you to all those involved in that. All right, so I'll call a question. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, hearing none, the motion carries six to zero. All right, next tonight is our report from Chief Kelly.
Thank you, sir. I have the monthly service statistics for April of 2020. In April of 2020, we handled 565 calls for service. We issued four traffic citations, investigated one traffic accidents, and there were no arrests for the month of April, sir. That is my report.
Okay, quick and easy. Any questions for the chief?
I have some questions.
All right, Mrs. Perlmutter, make it very quick, please.
I was wondering how with the Facebook post, when you post certain crimes and not other crimes, how is that determined?
Mrs. Perlmutter, that, you know, unless the chief wants to chime in, you know, that's, that is, I'm sure, a police department policy. There's something in place there.
Well, I have something very important I would like to mention. I think the council would be interested in this because it wasn't posted anywhere. I don't know if you're aware that a loaded semi-automatic gun was found on Main Street. It had a bullet in the chamber. It was right at the time that children were doing the Easter egg hunt. There was also money along with it. And I think that, you know, that's the kind of thing that the public really would probably want to know. That's why I was asking.
Thank you, Mrs. Perlmutter. Again, our police department, you know, I have confidence in their ability to post what's relevant, what's not, and make that determination. And as always, if you believe there is anything that is a danger to the community, I would recommend contacting our police department. Any other questions for Chief Kelly? All right, hearing none, we will now move on to our engineer's report.
Liz, you want to go?
Yep. Hi, everyone. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. So major update is that construction is back up and running. So they are trying to move forward with the main and afton signal as quickly as possible because we are still under the gun with invoice 80% by the end of May. So we got the second payment certificate in this morning and we processed that. So at the next meeting, definitely be prepared to approve all those so we can get those numbers in back to the Penn dot and that requirement. We shoot the punch list to Yardley Walk. And we received their COVID safety plan already. So they're good to go once they get a contractor on board to complete some of the miscellaneous items that they have. We sent out the notification to ML7 that they can resume. But they were pretty close to being done before all of this happened anyways. They had already laid down some stabilization, so we're really not expecting too much in that regard. And then the last major update is that the Greenways Trails and Recreation Program grant by DCED is due at the end of the month. And this was the additional grant that we had talked about looking into to potentially help out with the acquisition of the Pico lot. So this particular grant can be up to $250,000 and has a 15% match. And it can cover the acquisition. It can cover the environmental assessment that will need to be done. It can also cover portions of the actual design work. So we could use it for all three of those aspects and break it up accordingly. But that is due on the 31st, so we need to make the decision to move forward with that package sooner than later so that we can get the resolution into them by, ideally, by the 31st. But if you guys want to think about it a little bit more, they have been very understanding about allowing us to submit the resolutions after the application. So if we wanted to wait until next meeting to make the decision, and then at the very first June meeting, we get the resolution and send it in, that would be acceptable.
All right, that's just general question. What do we think's involved in terms of that grant application? In terms of the kind of work that needs to be done to submit?
Considering that we have already put together an application for a different regulator, most of the attachments are very similar. We still have to put it in their formatting. But I don't think a lot. I was looking through it earlier today. I don't think it would be too much.
All right. Anyone else from council have any thoughts or questions in regards to that grant opportunity?
I have a comment. So we are, general government will be going through some cost savings budget reducing measures later in this meeting. However, we did list this opportunity as one that we would still like to prioritize this year, even given cost constraints that we're putting on ourselves to cut costs because we do expect that it will have a favorable impact on our CRS rating in the borough because it would be, become hopefully borough own property that we were preserving as open space and would not be developed. So that is a reason why general government would suggest that we, you know, despite wanting to save money, prioritize this application.
Great. Any other thoughts, questions, comments?
Has the appraisal been completed? Do we know when we will know?
It's supposed to be completed like any day now. So I have to, I tried to get in touch with George today. I didn't hear back from him. But I'll certainly know as soon as we get back. He did receive the letter that he requested from Bucky outlining, you know, what could be done to the person, what couldn't be. So we should be wrapping that up any day now.
Great. All right, so I guess if we do wait until next time, there's still enough time to get that in. Is sort of the consensus here?
Yeah, it's not due till the 31st. And like I said, we've already put together the other applications. So most of the stuff is already put together. So that would be a bad thing to wait until the next meeting.
Yeah, because of what I was wondering about the appraisal, wouldn't you need to know how much we're asking for the one grant in order to ask for the second grant?
That would be helpful, which is why I'm not pushing it for today either because I wanted to get that back and haven't yet.
All right, so that sounds good. I guess we can plan to have that on the agenda for next time then.
Okay, I just wanted to talk about it with everybody in the same place. And then on to the project updates. The, as I said, main and afton's getting back underway with construction. Mary Yardley footbridge, we submitted to PHMC. We're just in the waiting game with them. And I think that that's it. Oh, the EAC grant, we have made strides forward with that. We had some meetings and we are just putting together a item list of some things that the borough has to buy directly. So I'll be getting in touch with Paula about that and going over that. I think I just got the finalized list at the beginning of this week from ASA and EAC about everything that we needed to include in that. But otherwise, I think that's everything, unless anyone has any questions.
Yeah, I had a question. First, for the PHMC, how long, you said there was a timeframe last time that they had to respond?
They have 30 days.
30 days, okay.
But they don't seem to be taking that long because they already reached out for more information, which I submitted to them. I think they're kind of going through these quickly.
Then the second question, anything, you hear anything back on the second sidewalk grant that we applied for with regards to like irrigation? I know we applied for another one.
So the second grant that we applied for was to help cover the stormwater and drainage aspects of it. And the last thing that they had told us was that they were not awarding those grants until July. So that grant was called the PA Small Sewer and Water Grant. I don't know if that timeframe has shifted. I can certainly check in with them. But there was a whole suite of grants that they were lumping together as part of that probe. And they were, the last we were informed was they were awarding them in July. So no, we haven't heard yet, but I can certainly check in on that if you would like me to.
Thank you.
All right, anything else? All right, hearing none, we'll move on to our Borough Manager report.
Besides my report that I already submitted, I wanted to let you all know that the building code official has been back in the office. And any permits that came in while we were closed, although we're still closed, he has been issuing permits. He's doing it with no contact. He meets people outside or I drop off permits on my way home from the office and pick up payment as well. I was also informed by the farmers market that they would like to continue with their farmers market on May 16th, which would be a week from Saturday, I believe. And they want to do it with a whole bunch of new social distancing rules. They're going to spread everybody apart. People are going to be wearing masks. They're going to be doing pre-orders plus table sales as well. With Starbucks being closed and everybody else being closed, they're going to ask Wawa if it's okay to use the bathroom facilities there. But I just wanted to make sure it was okay with you. You felt comfortable with allowing them to continue and continue with this great program. So if anybody has any questions, let me know. Otherwise, that's what they would like to plan to do for the 16th. And it would be limited hours as well. And they're encouraging senior citizens to come in between eight and 10 in the morning. So the new hours of the market would be from eight to 12.
All right, any questions or comments about those changes from council?
Just as a point of clarification, I don't think it was ever mandated that they close. That was just their personal choice, correct?
Right, well, they have been continuing to, even when they were at Friends Meeting, they actually, you brought it outside. And then the last two weeks, they've been doing pre-orders. So they had the vendors and they, Sue actually had a vendor that showed up on Saturday that wanted to do table sales. And he came from quite a distance away and she told him, go back home. We're not doing any table sales yet. Everything had to be pre-ordered. So no, it's never been shut down in its entirety. But they would just like to get back to, especially with the crap starting to come in, table sales.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I'm personally supportive since they're selling a local produce. And that's definitely essential to families. But that, it's not really Yardley Borough Council's decision, but I personally am supportive.
I think they just want to make sure that you guys are all comfortable with them going back to the sales and having people milling around. But they're going to try to do the social distancing as much as possible. They're going to have extra people there to help with the crowd control as well.
Yeah, I just echo this. I definitely support that personally. And I just commend them for thinking through all those parts, such as the bathroom, and figuring out a way to do it when it's something that is, food is hard for people to get. So actually being able to get food in the borough is a big plus.
Absolutely. And that is my report for tonight.
I have a question.
Thank you. Yes, Mrs. Perlmutter.
Regarding the building official, how exactly does it work in terms of him inspecting during the COVID crisis? I mean, I can understand that he can issue permits, but don't certain jobs have to be inspected before they can move on to different points? Just wondering how that works.
He has to follow the CDC rules for inspecting. I'm sure his company is going over all that with him as well. And he has been having a mask on when needed.
Right, we can follow up.
So he is doing inspections?
We can follow up.
I have not seen him physically doing an inspection as of yet. He's just been issuing permits.
Right, we can follow up to figure out. With the governor reopening construction as of May 1st, you know, that means we have to do our end of that as well, which may involve inspections. All right, thank you. Moving on, next is our solicitor's report.
Yes, good evening, everyone. I really only have one item, and that's to just let council know that the easement agreement with the Fosters has been finalized. So I think it just needs to be signed and recorded. But that has been completed at this point. And it's really all I have to report tonight.
All right, nice and easy. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, you are next.
Just 10 seconds. So once again, I'm sure you all heard the radio show today, so I don't have to talk to you about that. But just wanted to thank Paula Johnson for her help in setting up the call-ins for the past three weeks. She's been really good. We've had not only borough businesses, but borough teachers and parents, and then today borough high school kids all call in. So the last three shows have been very Yardley Borough-centric and pulled off the calls, so thank you.
All right, thank you, Mayor Harden. Next, we'll move into council member reports. We'll start with Mr. Berry.
No report.
All right, thank you. Mr. Ross is not here, so we'll move next to Ms. Segal-Morris. Alright, thank you. Mr. Ross is not here, so we'll move next to Ms. Segal-Morris.
Public safety did meet this evening and Chief went over the statistics. We heard from Mr. Four Acre and he's been securing supplies for both fire company and the borough. And I believe we're waiting on more hand sanitizer, but everybody's been doing a really great job keeping the borough safe. So thank you. And there's been no airport meeting or human relations meetings.
Thank you for the update. From myself, the sewer authorities regularly scheduled meeting would be next week. Actually, Paula, do you know offhand if they're planning to meet? I believe they canceled last month.
I believe they are going to plan to meet via Zoom.
Okay.
I'll keep you posted on that and send, send out that link as well.
Alright, thank you. So in the event that they do meet, I'll attend and I'll provide any updates. Next, Councilperson Thompson.
Yes, the only thing that really came up worth noting in my committee business would be the community newsletter. And I wasn't sure if you would like to discuss that here or under discussion items.
Let's do it under discussion items.
Okay, so I have nothing else to report from general government or Parks and Market.
Alright, thank you. Councilperson McCann.
Community Economic Development Met, we talked about revising the floodplain ordinance, kind of picking up that work. There was a lot of good work done last council on it. We're going to kind of review the recommendations from Pima and FEMA. And we're also going to work with the Planning Commission on that, see where we're at, kind of meet more about that. And then we also had a resident bring up the idea of incentivizing more businesses in Yardley and trying to diversify businesses that we have here. Certainly, a lot of people are lamenting a lot of the businesses that are closed during this time. So that's it for me. And thank you.
Alright, and finally, Councilmember Finer. Oops, you're muted.
Sorry about that. So we did have a community outreach committee meeting tonight, but I was the only attendee. So it was a fun meeting with myself.
Been there.
And the one thing I have to report is I did have a conversation with David Appelbaum from Experience Yardley. And he just wanted people to know that they are kind of thinking through how they're going to operate in a sort of post-pandemic reality. And that, you know, they're, they're going to have some more, hopefully by the next council meeting. They're going to have some more information about what they've come up with, but they're not going anywhere. So in case people are wondering that, that's what they have to report. Thank you.
Thank you. Good to hear. They certainly do a lot for us. Alright, so that concludes our council member reports. We will move on then to discussion items. Councilperson Thompson, they are both yours tonight.
Sure. So I guess I'll start with hopefully the easier one, which is the community newsletter. So as General Government and Manager Johnson and Patty, our financial secretary, we're going through the budget with a fine-tooth comb, looking for what we might reduce or cut. The community newsletter came up again, as it has many times. So it is no longer paying for itself. The borough pays now $800 a year to keep that viable. And things are due to press about eight weeks prior to printing. So you're really restricted to how up to date it can be. So everyone probably noticed the most recent one that went out had a lot of information that was already updated due to COVID and cancellations. So we can't cancel it this year because we have advertisers who have already paid. And that would be a headache to return those monies. But we are seriously considering and wondering thoughts on moving to a virtual newsletter next year, which we could do for next to nothing. And it would really be a good opportunity for us to beef up our email list. Because it's, it's not a good representation of our, all of our residents right now. And we don't even have probably 20% of residents on our email list. So I just was looking for thoughts as we do need to let our, the publishing company know, give them some heads up if we do plan to cancel for next year. So are there any thoughts?
I would love to share thoughts on that. I, I think it's time, you know, I think it's, it used to be a piece of paper that was Xeroxed and, and passed around. And it's kind of morphed into the present version, which is very nice. But I, I think that now, especially with this era that we're in, more and more people are electronically aware of. I think we've passed that point where if there are a few people left out from being able to receive it electronically, they probably know somebody that can print it and give it to them. So I would move towards the electronic format because I think the benefit to everyone would be far greater. And the way I would, I would suggest we do it, whether it's like, you know, MailChimp or Madmimi. Yeah, one of those, Madmimi, you know, there are a few other ones, is we could potentially get started with the email, using that as an email tool now. And then we could move a newsletter to it whenever we wanted to, so we can kind of get our feet wet with it. It's not very expensive. And the idea that Paula has to manually add and remove people from the list is just, you know, not good use of, of her time either. And this would take care of that. So there's a benefit in there.
Thank you. Paula, I know you had some thoughts about this bittersweet decision. Do you want to share anything, any of your thoughts? Because you hear from community members more about it than we do probably.
I think we have a small amount of residents that maybe aren't tech savvy. So I worry about them, of course. We don't have everybody's email. I don't, I don't know much about MailChimp. So how do we get the emails from people? Or are we willing to walk around and go to every neighborhood and ask somebody to knock on doors and get them? I can use the next two.
Not right now, though. Not right now.
Not right now, but I can use the next two newsletters to try to get people to submit it. But year after year, on even on the trash bills, I always put on there, keep up with borough events. Send us your emails, send something in, and we get very little. So I think if we're going to rely on people to send us something in, it's going to be difficult. I think it's going to need manpower to really tackle each section and get emails. But I, you know, I love the newsletter. It's a lot of work. And I agree, it's, the lead time is a long time. But I'm, what are you going to do? I have, I guess we have to get into the new millennium.
Yeah, and we can certainly print copies for anyone who doesn't have email and have them available in Borough Hall. Is anyone strongly opposed? We're just going to put feelers out with the publishing company to see when the deadline might be.
Caroline.
Can we do biannual thing? Or like a twice a year at least?
That was my thought.
Some piece of paper.
I just wanted to chime in. I, I kind of agree with Kim that there's a certain charm. We live in this small town. And certainly a lot of residents like receiving that piece of paper. It's probably one of the few pieces of mail that I actively look forward to getting and reading and seeing what's in there. And certainly some of the events and some of the pictures, even like this $800 cost. You know, and I understand that, but maybe once a year or something Yardley in review to kind of supplement and still give people that kind of personal touch. That sometimes, I know we have technology that reaches broad number of people. But as Paula said, there's still a number of people who aren't connected. And it's still, as a small town, I think there's a certain charm in that newsletter that goes out that I would hate to see lose that full.
Sure. So the $800 we pay subsidizes the advertiser fees. So if we were only doing it once a year, we would probably struggle to find anyone interested in advertising in it. I mean, I'm just guessing. So the cost might go up to several thousand dollars for that one issue. But that's something that we can look into. And I'm hoping that we don't have to make the decision right now. But I do appreciate those comments. Anyone else?
Something we could be mindful of is, you know, if we do want to send out something in paper, you know, looking what other publications are there, could we get some space? You know, let's say, could the borough take a page in the Yardley Voice to do an update of what we're doing? Something that's going out anyhow, if we do want to still at least once a year, provide some sort of physical copy to folks.
Could it be like an insert in that paper? Can it just be like a one-page insert in the paper?
Right, that's what I'm saying. We should explore those, we should explore those options.
We send the trash bill four times a year. Why don't we just put it in there?
Do that.
Right, yeah, I don't want to get.
It's just the cost of Xeroxing, you know, of copying the paper then. It could be like.
But the only thing with that, Ori, is we do have a good number of residents that pay for the entire year. So those 300 or 400 people wouldn't get anything after the first quarter.
Right.
Could also be the tax.
Right, we're billing that through too. So we might, you know, not necessarily be able to put something unrelated to trash into the mailing. But anyhow, I think we've got a pulse on this.
Yeah, I think Ryan was trying to say something, though. Let me just.
Yeah, my question was, I do like the idea of the newsletter, even if it's once a year, twice a year. But I understand it costs money. If we did go to an e-newsletter option, would the information, so those not on the list, could they still get the, the most essential information on the website? Will there be like a website counterpart of the e-newsletter?
Yeah, we could do that.
You can embed your MailChimp into your website. So that's something we can do. And yeah, there's a lot of options. I, I'll get more information. And I just wanted to make sure that it's something we're at least open to considering. I know last time we discussed this last year, we weren't ready yet. So it sounds like we're getting closer. And I'll get some more information and report back.
Yeah, my concern.
Can I just say?
Hold on, my concern is just to make sure people get the information they need if they don't have the email on the list. That was my concern.
Can I just say, I, I think that both can be done. I'm very familiar with MailChimp, and I think it would be fabulous to have that set up for Yardley. It would be great for the farm market, would be great for a number of things. There's a lot of ways to get people to sign up to it. And once you have it, then you, you even have statistics in the back. But it can be used to advertise everything from Destination Yardley to the farm market to the newsletter. It doesn't preclude still doing the newsletter, but I, I think MailChimp would, would be a great addition. I'd be more than willing to help with that.
Great, thank you. And that was sort of a secondary point that we brought up, that having a more complete email list. You know, sure, it's good for the newsletter, but it's also good for when we need to get out critical information in a timely manner. That we have a little bit more of a complete list rather than just relying on Facebook, which is largely what we do now. So more to come on all of that in the future, I'm sure.
Just a question related to this, and this is probably a Paula question. But is there some sort of, do you have a master list of residents? Or are they all sort of separate lists, like one for taxes, one for trash, one for emails?
I do have a master list that I receive from Cheryl through the taxes.
So do you, do you have, what I'm trying to figure out is if you know which people you have emails from and who you don't. So if we were trying to do a campaign to get email addresses, if we could basically focus on the ones we don't have. And then over time, kind of fill in the gaps.
Sure. What I was thinking even doing, and I mentioned it to Kim yesterday when I saw her, is pick out somebody from a street, a couple people, and that are willing to go and get those emails. And I think we're small enough that people would do that for us.
Street captains.
Yes.
I love it. That's great. Either way, we should get those email addresses. It just helps on so many levels.
I agree.
If I could just chime in for a second, it's Roger Crook. When I did that survey about projects in the borough a couple of years ago, I got a pretty good list of email addresses. We had a pretty good response rate on that. Do you still have that, Paula, or do you?
Yes, I do.
Okay, good.
Same with the Playground Committee.
Yeah, so we would have to send them all emails and ask them to opt in. But yeah, we, we have pieces here and there. We just need to pull them all together.
Yeah, so I don't want to get too in the weeds on this one, which I think we've already done. So let's move on to the, to the budget stuff.
Sure. So Manager Johnson and Patty did an amazing job doing a year-to-date analysis of our financials as compared to this time last year. And we are displaying signs of strong financial health, all things considered. You've seen in the news that a lot of other municipalities are experiencing budget shortfalls to the tune of hundreds of thousands, millions of dollars. And we are anticipating a worst-case scenario of an unfavorable budget between 30,000 and 60,000 if we do not right-size by the summer or even later in the year. And that's, we're absolutely worst-case scenario, what we're anticipating. So with all that being said, we want to present a plan that would ensure we are covered if the worst-case scenario becomes the reality. So we did provide you that financial analysis as well as general government's recommendations for how we're going to plug the gap. And we tried to select things that are going to be as painless as possible for us. So I'll just quickly go through them so the public can hear what we're considering. So budget removals would be removing all training and conference-related expenses except for the police force for the remainder of the year. Chief has offered to roll the purchase of a new police car to the next fiscal year, which would be a cost savings of roughly $10,000, or a cost delay, I should say. We are also proposing, since we're not having as many parades this year, that we cancel street sweeping this year, which is a cost savings of approximately $1,000 to $1,500. Budget reductions, we're proposing a 25% reduction to the recreation and parks budget, which the biggest portion of that budget is under the line item of maintenance. And since our parks will be closed for a quarter of the year, this seemed like it made sense. It's, that's roughly $6,000 there. We're going to hold tax collection of delinquent bills and all general tax collection until the 30th of July, as we announced at the last meeting, to give our residents some relief if they're struggling financially. And then we are holding a new door for Borough Hall and repairs to the annex roof until September 30th. It's quite possible that September 30th comes, and when we reassess that, we'll decide we cannot do those this year. But we were hopeful to still try to do them this year, just so, you know, if we keep pushing repairs down the road, our Borough Hall will fall into disrepair. We are proposing some changes in process. So bi-weekly lists of services completed by our public works contractor would be approved by council except emergencies and regular items like grass cutting. And then summary emails will be sent weekly to our solicitor and engineer and any other vendors instead of, you know, sending them emails here and there to try to reduce some of those fees. We're also proposing that we get a consensus of council to use up to $10,000 of our emergency fund for any fees directly caused by COVID-19 that are not covered by federal and state reimbursement. Our current emergency fund balance is $140,000. And then for capital projects, I mentioned this briefly before. We are recommending that despite the fact that we're tightening our belt, we do proceed with two projects. The first would be the Mary Yardley Bridge, just due to the fact that it is falling into disrepair and is becoming a hazard. And we're looking for consensus of council to fund the Yardley Borough contribution. So not the full amount of the bridge, but our contribution exclusively from capital reserve, not from the general fund. Our current capital fund balance is $213,000 and change. And then finally, for the Pico Lot, if we secure the grant that we prior, continue to prioritize that budget for the 2020 fiscal year due to the fact that it would positively impact our CRS rating for our floodplain residents. So that is everything that we are proposing. We don't want to do a formal amendment to the budget because these are just guidelines we're recommending. And we're hoping we don't have to follow all of them. But again, worst-case scenario, if we follow them, we will be, we should be okay this year and not have a budget deficit. Are there any questions or concerns?
Thank you for reviewing this. Probably a lot of hard work. And the changes make total sense. So. Thank you for reviewing this. It's probably a lot of hard work and the changes make total sense. So
Thank you. Kudos to Paula and Patty again.
I echo that. And also just wondering if, do you have an order, like in other words, is there a kind of things you'd cut first thing, or is it just kind of looking at the whole thing?
Um, no, the things, you know, there's only three things that we recommended removing completely. So I really couldn't prioritize them. Obviously, you know, street sweeping fifteen hundred dollars is not going to make or break us, but it's everything in harmony with one another will get us through safely. I welcome feedback, though. If there's something that you see on here that you would like to remove, please let us know.
All right, any other thoughts, questions, concerns, comments? And of course, if not tonight, this is sort of a living and ever-changing process. You know, so we'll continue to get these budget updates. But if in any of your work, you sort of stumble across things that you think could be changed or could help our bottom line as a whole, I know that we would all certainly welcome that feedback and those suggestions. All right, so unless any member of council has any other business they would like to bring up, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
So moved.
Second.
All right, motions made by Councilperson Thompson, seconded by Councilperson Berry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody. Have a good night.
Bye, stay safe.
I know.
All right, everyone. Stay safe.